Good afternoon. This is the second meeting of the special meetings of the Finance Committee. This will take place between two o'clock and five o'clock. Well, we have to make sure that the funding sort will not be above what is required. Members, if they want to speak, please press the speak, press to speak button. I remind members that all questions will have to be directly related to the estimate. And members, please refer to the reply number, say for example FS 001 when referring to the information. Well, if there is not enough time, then members may ask supplementary questions afterwards. We have with us the Secretary for Financial Services and the Treasury, Mr. James Lau, to answer questions. Would you like to start with this, an opening remark? Yes. I'll briefly introduce the estimate of expenditure for financial services in our key areas of work in the coming area. The allocation to the financial services branch and departments under its purview for 2018-19 is about 1.69 billion. The amount represent an increase of about 580 million over last year. In the coming year, we'll focus our work on reinforcing Hong Kong's status as an international financial centre, promoting market development and enhancing protection for investors and the general public. We'll capitalize on the opportunities arising from the Belt and Road Initiative and the Guangdong-Hong Kong Macau Bay Area Development to reinforce Hong Kong's status as a global hub for offshore RMB business and an international asset management centre. Hong Kong's in the best position to provide offshore RMB business project financing, risk management, capital management and other related services for enterprises along Belt and Road regions and in the Bay Area. Leveraging the opportunities presented by the Bay Area Development, we'll actively explore and seek to implement measures that will facilitate capital flow and integration of financial markets in the Bay Area such as expanding cross-border financial services and lowering entry thresholds with a view to enhancing financial developments of two places. To promoting market development, in this regard, I'd like to give a brief account of our priorities. First, bond market, to encourage more investors and issuers from the mainland Asian along Belt and Road to participate in the Hong Kong bond market. The government plans to launch an area of measures to enhance our competitiveness, including attracting corporate bond issuers, facilitating investment, investors' participation and broadening investor platform. These measures include launching a three-year pilot bond grant scheme, refining the quality, qualifying debt instrument scheme, continuing the issuance of silver bonds in this late next year, and allowing securities brokers to participate in the subscription of silver bonds so as to increase sales channels. On green finance, we will vigorously promote Hong Kong's regional green finance hub. A portion of the $500 million dedicated provision will be used for introducing a green bond grant scheme to subsidize qualified green bond issuers in obtaining green bond certification. Besides, we'll launch a green bond issuance program with a borrowing ceiling of $100 billion. The sums borrowed will be credited to the Capital Works Reserve Fund for funding green public works projects of the government. We'll submit a draft resolution to the Legco as soon as possible to seek authorization to take forward the program. On asset and wealth management, we'll continue to develop Hong Kong's fund industry and in parallel adjust applicable tax arrangements with regard to international requirements on tax cooperation. We're reviewing the existing tax concession arrangements applicable to fund industry as well as examining the feasibility of introducing a limited partnership regime for private equity funds and related tax arrangements. We're consulting the industry in relation to these enhancements on tax concession arrangements that will consult Legco. We'll continue with our work on implementing the open-ended fund company regime. A bill was passed by Legco last month so that all types of OFCs could enjoy profit tax exemption. We're introduced to the Legco subsidiary legislation setting our operational details in due course. Our target is to implement the regime in tandem with the related tax concession arrangements this year. On listing platform, the Hong Kong Exchanges and Clearing Limited has finished the consultation on the listing regime for companies with from emerging and innovative sectors, and they're considering the views and feedback collected with a view to releasing the consultation conclusions and implementing the new regime in light of comments received. It's expected that the new regime can be implemented within this quarter. To enhance Hong Kong's competitiveness as an insurance hub, we'll set up a dedicated task force to undertake a series of tax reviews covering areas such as captive insurance, reinsurance and marine insurance. We'll also discuss with the insurance authority the feasibility of updating regulatory requirements as appropriate with a view to facilitating business thereby attracting more enterprises to underwrite their overseas risks in Hong Kong. We'll amend certain provisions of the new company's ordinance to improve its clarity and operation and to further facilitate business in Hong Kong. We have consulted the panel on financial affairs. They generally support the proposed legislative amendments. The bill will be introduced into Legco this quarter. On development of financial technologies fintech, the government and regulators will continue to facilitate development. In September this year, the Hong Kong Monetary Authority will launch faster payment system around-the-clock real-time payment platform with full connectivity between banks and stored-value facilities operators. Hong Kong MA has also consulted banking industry on reviewing and amending the guidelines on virtual banks and will make the best endeavor to issue licenses within this year. Since the establishment of Financial Services Development Council, it has been dedicated to advising the government on sustained development of Hong Kong's financial services industry. We will allocate more resources to the council to enhance its role in conducting strategic research, formulating recommendations, promoting market development and nurturing talent. To allow the council to carry out its functions more effectively and to enhance its operational efficiency and flexibility, we plan to incorporate the council as a company limited by guarantee and provide funding to support this operation. Subject to funding approval of Legco, the council will be incorporated by the end of this year. The third area is protection for investors and the general public. Regarding this area, I would like to highlight a few initiatives. First, policyholders' protection scheme. It aims at providing a safety net by compensating policyholders or securing the continuity of insurance contracts in case an insurer becomes insolvent. We briefed the Legco panel on financial affairs at this meeting in March on details of the legislation. Our target is to introduce the bill into Legco for scrutiny in the 2018-19 year. Saving for retirement, to encourage early preparation for better retirement protection amongst the public, we're discussing with insurers and mandatory provident fund trustees on the implementation details of tax concessions for deferred annuity products and MPF voluntary contributions. We'll also discuss with the Investor Education Centre ways to enhance public awareness of retirement wealth management products. Three, tackling money lending-related malpractices. Since 2016, the government has implemented a four-pronged approach to tackle money lending-related malpractices. It has generally been effective in tackling such malpractices. In particular, we note that since the implementation of these measures, the number of complaints against unscrupulous intermediaries received by police has dropped significantly. We'll continue to monitor the situation closely, implement further enhancement measures and strengthen public education. Four, international regulatory requirements. The government introduced the Financial Reporting Council Amendment Bill 2018 into Legco in January this year to further enhance the independence of the existing regulatory regime for listing entity auditors from the audit profession so as to enhance investor protection and ensure that the regime is benchmarked against international standard and practice. The Bills Committee is now scrutinizing the bill. In relation to resolution regime for financial institutions, we're improving our regime for financial institutions, including formulation of relevant subsidiary legislation to enhance risk of stability to strengthen our resilience. We'll be happy to take questions. First, Mr. Charles Ma, four minutes. I would like to talk about 005. Mr. Ronic Chen asked about promotion of fintech. Previously, I have mentioned to the Permanent Secretary that, well, we have been talking about blockchain for a number of years. Are there any initiatives or new projects that are in the pipeline on a trial basis? Well, you may say that there is one for trade and finance from the Hong Kong MA, but it's not enough. And when it comes to removing legal barriers, I haven't seen any timetable. Just now, lunchtime, I spoke to someone from the trade. They said that you've spent a lot of resources, I don't know how much, on, say, API on television, say, talking about ICO, saying that is a train wreck, that is scary. And at the same time, you talk about promotion of fintech. I do understand that there are some malpractices that you have to warn the public against. However, you have confused the public. They think that these things are very dangerous. So how much resources have you used in this regard? You will have to give me supplementary answer, I think, that is in relation to these APIs. That is for 003 and also 033. Well, you talk about payment system. The PS told us that government system is too outdated to use this. However, in reply 33, they said that they're talking, they're looking into it with departments. We don't want to see an endless research or study. Will you give resources to departments to say, to make sure that where payment is received, you will have to give them resources to update their systems? For blockchain technology, I remember a question is asked in a panel meeting, and I have explained. Of course, the government will continue to encourage R&amp;D on blockchain. When it comes to application, the members have said that the banking sector and the Hong Kong MA have put in place a pilot scheme on trading and finance. If it's successful, we'll be further promoted. On ICO, we have started a public education campaign. It is done through the Investor Protection Centre. Not much is spent on it. If need be, I will provide the information. It's just something under $1 million. If we have new projects, of course, there will be publicity. The member asked about government departments. That is, whether e-wallets can be used to make government, to pay government bills. Well, it's not the case of a lack of resources. If the system has to be upgraded or revamped, it takes time. We're talking to these department to see if that can be done so that they will accept e-wallets as a form of payment for government bills.
Mr. Kenneth Long, four minutes. Thank you, Chairman. My question is 2396, that's my question number. I asked about green bonds, and according to the answer, there is a green bond pilot scheme. And in the opening remarks, the Secretary mentioned that the green bond grant scheme is to help green bond issuers to obtain subsidy for certification of the bonds. So say if there is a new issuer of green bond, does it mean that the issuer at the same time can benefit from the pilot bond grant scheme as well as the green bond grant scheme such that he can apply for subsidies? I mean, the issuer is issuing just one green bond, but can he benefit from both? That's correct, Chairman, because green bond grant scheme has to do with green bond certification, whereas pilot bond grant scheme relates to issuance. So he can benefit from both. I have another question. And that is about the Financial Reporting Council. Now, the amendment bill is being scrutinized at the moment, and many members of the Bills Committee have asked whether a seed fund can be provided by the government to facilitate the operation of the FRC. So that at least during the running period, stakeholders will see a reduction of their burden in terms of payment. And there are also other suggestions on the fund, 300, 600 or 500 million dollars. Well, I wonder if the government can agree on any figure, Secretary? We are also looking into the same issue, and we have heard divergent views on the matter. Regarding the figure, during our discussion, some stakeholders and some members of this council mentioned, for example, at the time when we set up the Insurance Authority, similar level of support was provided. So it depends on the estimates, the budget, and also the establishment of the FRC. And after collecting views, we'll consider all the views in one go. I'd also like to follow up on 2372, another question put by me. Throughout the years, the government have been introducing different tax concessions for variety of financial products. However, well, regarding 2372, my question is on Sukuk or Islamic bond. And then point C. Since 2013, how many Sukuk's have been issued in Hong Kong? And what have been the general demand for these products? And how many issuers would issue Sukuk using Hong Kong as the base? But your answer doesn't really address my issue. I don't see the number of users of this platform or issuers. Can you give us some statistics? I'm referring to my question number 2372 point C. Secretary, we do not have the figures at hand, but as far as the Hong Kong MA and the government are concerned, we continue to promote the initiative. But the IRD should be able to keep statistics on the issues who have applied under the scheme. Have you this statistics? We do not have this information at hand. We can supplement the answer later. Dr. KK Kwok. I'd like to ask reply numbers 576 and 577. Well, I can say that our financial system is facing a lot of headwinds. Well, the recent link rate is already an alarming bell, and I see that as far as our development is concerned, it is very much related to the Belt and Road Initiative. Ever since the Belt and Road Initiative has been announced, well, the IMF Chief Lagard also warned about this. Belt and Road Initiative may bring economic benefits, but more importantly, these Belt and Road countries may actually face financial problems. Well, if the mainland is proceeding in full steam with the Belt and Road Initiative, and if there are already existing risks such as sovereign risks, and if our government is not prepared, and just blindly follow the mainland's development, in the end, we'll be facing huge risks. So in terms of the Belt and Road development, if it doesn't turn out to be what we expected, if in the end we incur losses, I'd like to ask first of all, the government's risks. And we're going to continue to put in $78 million on the AIIB. And again, similar to the Belt and Road Initiative, despite the funding support that we are providing, we may not be able to see an actual return. So in terms of balancing economic gain and our investment, how do you make sure we have a positive return, a net yield in the future? Or will it be the case, as predicted by many economists at the moment, that we will be facing total loss? Well, the member is concerned about the financial risks brought about from, by the Belt and Road Initiative. The IMF Chief Christina Gart mentioned that about loans brought up by these Belt and Road countries. We need to be aware of the risk of default by these countries. However, the lending countries will also conduct assessments. Well, the member also mentioned the AIIB. Now, about the financing projects covered by the AIIB, well, we call it the Belt and Road Initiative, but in fact, these projects are actually taking place along the Belt and Road countries. As for the borrower of these projects, we do require co-financing, that is working with a number of other countries in a multilateral manner. That is why sometimes the AIIB as well as the Asian Development Bank would also collaborate on the financing, called co-financing projects. These loans are of a longer tendency, and it will take a longer time to make assessment. Your time is up. Wait for your next round, please. Mr. Ronic Chen. Well, I'd like to follow up on FS 003, a question asked by me. Regarding the faster payment system, it is said that the Hong Kong MA will be launching it in September this year, offering 24-hour real-time payment. And then the store value facility service providers can then provide real-time round-the-clock cross-institution payment. However, I don't see resources available from the government to educate the public on changing their payment habit? Or is it that the government is not responsible for publicity and only the HKMA is? And according to the government's reply, the FSTB is now working with relevant government departments to allow the public to make use of QR code or common QR code to pay government bills. Now, what government departments are you referring to, and how long would it take? If it can be launched within 2018, publicity is needed to heighten the public's awareness on new payment methods. So will the budget be coming from the FSTB or from the relevant government departments? Secretary, regarding the e-wallets and barcode or QR code, earlier in the Legislative Council, we also responded to these views. Departments such as IRD and RNVD, these are the departments with bills issued with barcode. So for these departments, e-payment is possible. As for timeframe, well, we do have different service providers in Hong Kong developing e-wallets. We therefore need to come up with the best solution to cater for the needs of different service providers. Otherwise, the department's systems will have to see an overhaul to cope with different electronic payment methods. As for education, we'll work with the Hong Kong MA. We'll explore appropriate channels to encourage the public to make greater use of e-payment. One aspect is education. The other aspect is this, on electronic bills, in fact, we're not using e-wallet, but we're in fact allowing different electronic payment methods already. So it is not really a deficiency that e-wallet is not used, but on the whole, we'll work on education, publicity. Chairman, I'd like to ask about FS 034, a question asked by Mr. Kenneth Long about Sukuk Islamic bonds. For the dozen countries along Belt and Road, the majority of them are Muslim countries, so we will be seeing a bigger market. The Islamic bonds were issued three times, each involving 10 billion US dollars. So that's quite a large sum. And what about the cost to be paid to, say, the AIIB? And also, there's a reply from the government to my question dated the 28th of February. Well, market education is very important as well. Does the government have the budget to demonstrate our resolve to make Hong Kong a platform for Islamic bonds? As far as the costs or operating costs are concerned, well, that's within the Hong Kong MA. We do not have a separate budget for that. As for education, our thinking is this. We mentioned countries along the Belt and Road, and publicity and education is of course necessary, and we'll consider how we can incorporate Islamic bonds in this regard as well. Dr. Christina Long. I'd like to ask CMAB 116 and CMAB 055. Well, that's not this session, not CMAB. So no question. Next, Mr. Gary Fan. My question is to follow up on FS 042, a reply from the government to Mr. Jeremy Tam's question regarding the number of SMEs or Chinese enterprises listed in Hong Kong. And I noticed that there are 152 such companies in the properties and construction sector with market value standing at a tune of $2,087 million. And according to statistics, as of October last year, regarding MTRCL projects, URA projects, et cetera, there were actually 21 commercial sites available comparing to 31 sites in 2016. It has gone down by 29%. But the total sum was standing at $171 billion, up by 81%. I am concerned about the property markets in Hong Kong. Well, these Chinese enterprises would go all the way in order to grab land in markets, and we do have measures to restrict mainland buyers from buying Hong Kong properties. What about Chinese enterprises? If they cause land prices to go up, or to continue to go up, what measure does the government have, Secretary? It's really, it's not really under the purview of our bureau, but let me also comment on that. Regarding land and investment, we have a free market in Hong Kong. So for these Chinese enterprises, whether they, I mean, whether they're enterprises elsewhere in China, as long as they meet the criteria and as long as they have the means to buy land, we do not have a mechanism to stop them from taking part in the process.
So when it comes to land auction, we have not any special measures. We're all family, very familiar about various measures, say for example, stamp duties targeting not just mainland buyers, overseas buyers, as well as short-term speculation. With our effort, we have successfully reduced by a great number, number of speculative transactions. We always work on supply. So the supply, the task force on land supply is looking at different ways to increase land supply as well as demand-side management, say for example, different types of taxes. as well as demand-side management, say, for example, different types of taxes to encourage build properties to be released into the market. Mr. Christopher Jung, four minutes. I would like to follow up on that is in relation to development of bond market. The administration said that they would continue in this and next year, the issuance of silver bond to increase the sales channel. They also said that the Hong Kong Exchange will provide services to facilitate brokers to participate. Does it mean that for future issuance of silver bonds, there will be new measures in place? The chance of brokers or security firms to participate will be increased. Can you elaborate? Who is to take the question? Secretary.
We said in our reply that we are currently making arrangements for the participate of brokerage. So this will be implemented. Well, that will be in relation to the first issuance. Can these securities brokers participate in the secondary sales, secondary market? For silver bond, there is no secondary market. If you want to expand the bond market, you need the participation of security brokers. Would you allow security brokers to participate in secondary market? I would like to say that silver bond is to encourage elderly people to buy silver bonds as a form of savings. Our understanding is that in general, demand in or supply in the second-hand market is small, but we will keep in view members' view. Thank you. I would like to follow up is in relation to the Steering Committee on Financial Services. Last year, well, they have actively participated in putting in place a listing regime in relation to a weighted voting rights structure. So that would be, as far as I know, another round of consultation, allowing companies to have a weighted voting rights structure. The Financial Services Development Council is in support of this. So I would like to know if this is supported by the administration that companies, more companies will be allowed to have weighted voting rights structure. Well, the Financial Leaders Forum so far has not discussed anything about beneficiaries of weighted voting rights structure. Well, we are aware that after consultation, the Hong Kong EX will issue consultation conclusions. I think we're looking at within this week. Afterwards, that is, well, after about end of April, there will be a further consultation. And then we will consider and asking the Financial Leaders Forum to discuss it. Sorry, speakers of mic. Just a short answer. We don't have any stance. Mr. Al Nokhim. I would like to follow up on 060. The question says that, well, the the Financial Services Development Council will be incorporated as a company guaranteed, limited by guarantee. There will also be a memorandum of understanding signed as a form of contract. So in relation to this memorandum of administrative arrangements, will it be scrutinized by the Legco? Can we ask questions about the content of the memorandum? PS. The Financial Services Development Council. They come to Legco to give a report every year. The member asked about the memorandum. The FSDC has set up a company limited by guarantee. So we need to have a memorandum to require the council to submit their annual plans and budget. In the future, the council will continue to go to the Financial Services Panel to explain about their annual plan. I believe that it will also cover budget as well. I want to ask a supplementary question. Well, when the company limited guarantee is set up, what is the power of monitoring by the government? Say, for example, to monitor the power of the board. Will there be any power to restrict the conduct of the council? All future appointments of members of the board will be made by the government. There will be a company guaranteed by, limited by guarantee set up. However, the government still has the power to monitor the work. The work, as we have stated in previous answers, is to study issues related to financial services development and to promote Hong Kong's financial services industry as well as to train local manpower. Another supplementary question from me. If there is a power to change the board, will there be mechanism to make sure that there won't be conflict of interest or transfer of interests with the board? Because there has been previous press report. Well, there was a report in relation to relaxation of REIT, Real Estate Investment Trust. Well, I think it involved someone who is in the industry. Well, I think that that person was involved in formulating the code. And in the end, Lingrit, as a result, benefited from it because of the involvement of that person. So will there be any mechanism to prevent conflict of interest and transfer of interests? As I've explained, that the council is an advisory body. Whether the recommendations are taken on board or whether rules are changed is the final decision of the regulator or the government. So the council does not have real power. Where there is conflict of interest, there is a system of declaration of interest. It exists now and it will continue to exist in the future. When a member of the board has certain interests, there will be declaration. Mr. Alvin Young. It is in relation to 31 and 411. Well, there will be green bond issued to develop a green finance. 150 million dollars is set aside for that. They hope that they will be able to raise 100 billion dollars. This will involve green public works project. So far, we have not got any details, so I would like to ask if there are any arrangements that in the course of issuance of such bonds and the fund raised will be used on civil engineering. Will there be any concern that in the end, the environment will be damaged? Are there any mechanisms to ensure the proper use of the fund? Another point. It says that they want to attract Belt and Road countries to participate in bond market. Have you done any assessment as to, well, how many people are interested and what is the amount involved? Relation to environmental impact assessment, when these bonds are issued, they will, they will have to be subject to a certification process. It's not just an environmental impact assessment. It may be a project of renewable energy, water, waterworks projects. They will have to receive certification of an international standard. We don't have any information about demand. But we know that there is, there is a large amount of fund that wants to be put in green project. Say, for example, in the Norwegian Suffering Fund. They said that special attention will be given to sustainable development. We're talking about billions of dollars. In Europe, more and more such sustainable developments. There are different types of investment funds. Young fund managers or fund owners attach importance to such development. We don't have any statistics. When it comes to the green bond program, it will be, we will identify green projects with certification under the Capital Works Reserve Fund. So there will only be positive impact, not negative ones on the environment. I would like to ask about Belt and Road countries. As far as you understand, are they interested in Hong Kong's bond market? Have they expressed any interest? Do you know?
Well, Chairman, regarding Belt and Road Initiative, we need to work harder on our promotion publicity. Because for the Belt and Road countries, what is in demand is infrastructure. And for infrastructure projects, they work with multilateral development banks. And they also raise funds from private financial institutions. Of course, we will amount publicity to encourage them, but it will still take time for the atmosphere to be ready. In short, we'll do more.
Mr. Michael Look. I'd like to follow up on FS 039 about the Default Investment Strategy, DIS. First, it's been one year since the DIS has been put in place. I'd like to know about the number of participants, whether there is a discrepancy with the estimated number of participants. And if there is a big discrepancy, have you conducted any evaluation as to why you're not meeting the target? Because for the DIS, it's a solution to the problem of high administrative fees. Well, it's capped, the ceiling was capped at 0.5%, or 0.45%, rather. However, I also understand that the return of the DIS is also lagging behind the benchmark return computed by the association. For example, of the 35 core funds, only six of them exceeded the benchmark, 17%. For the fund available for those aged 65 or above, the return was even more appalling, just 14%. So why is it that the majority of these core funds had lower returns than the benchmark returns? Is it because for these fund, they're not operated in an aggressive manner such that more scheme members would rather choose more aggressive funds with high administrative fees? Have you conducted any study into this matter as to why 85% of the funds had lower returns? I defer to Mr. Jung to take a question. As of 20, or at the end of December 2017, we have 1.37, 1.35 million MPF accounts switching to DIS. And we have not previously estimated the number of scheme members would be switching to the DIS. So I'm afraid I cannot tell you whether there is a discrepancy. As for the return, the philosophy of the Default Investment Strategy is to manage market risks. It's not the panacea. We're not suggesting that the fund can outrun any other funds in the market. That's not the objective of the core fund. The objective is to manage risk arising from price fluctuations. As for the figures mentioned by Mr. Michael Look, I think to give you a full picture, there are also funds under the DIS having very good return, a double-digit figure. So I need to make a point on this. It's been launched only for a year and I don't think it's fair to comment on its success or failure. Rather, we should wait for three or five years so that we have a trend of the asset price changes, so that we can gauge how the DIS could help retirees manage the market risks. That is why we previously reported to Legislative Council that three years down the road would definitely review the effectiveness of the DIS and also the ceilings of the fees and make necessary adjustments. One reason is whether you have a timetable for the full portability of the MPF contributions after you abolish the MPF offsetting mechanism, because this will help encourage competition among the different providers. Well, the Secretary for Labor and Welfare has proposed a solution to the abolition of the MPF offsetting mechanism. And it involves the use of EMPF as a platform for calculating payments. And that is why in our design, we have incorporated this function. And it can also tailor for full portability of the MPF accounts. You could see that we're rather ambitious. And the target is that we hope by 2022, we can launch EMPF. So that's the timetable.
Next, Mr. Wu Chi Wei. Thank you, Chairman. In the past few years, the government tabled the number of bills to amend the Inland Revenue Ordinance so that we have the prerequisites to develop ourselves into a corporate treasury center. And just now, I also heard about the Belt and Road Initiative and how we can promote ourselves as CTC. But at the same time, I feel that we're quite passive because we are only introducing to others the facilities we have. So as a way to attract overseas investors to use our CTC service or to use Hong Kong as a financing platform. So my question is, Secretary. Are there more forward-looking and specific measures?
for the government to take a more proactive approach to get more business for Hong Kong? And do you have any indicator? For example, in two or three years, what target we should reach? And for example, our competitor Singapore has adopted a comprehensive approach to attract international enterprises to use a financing service or to set up headquarters in Singapore. I want to know whether we have any strategy to compete with them. Uh, next point about retirement savings. That's paragraph eighteen of your paper. You mentioned that the insurance companies and the MPF trustees are discussing with the government on implementation details for the tax concessions for deferred annuity products and MPF voluntary contributions. Now, I don't know whether by that you mean for deferred annuity products, they will also be eligible for tax concessions? If so, do you have a timetable? When will it be implemented? Second, regarding the annuity plan put forward by the Hong Kong MA, will there be any competition with the private insurers and trustees? Well, of course, I am all for more choices for consumers. But have you assessed the impact brought about by competition? And such that in a way, the effectiveness of the annuity products would be undermined? Secretary, let me take your first question. When it comes to Belt and Road Initiative, we have the IFFO under HAMA which have contacted over hundred corporations and multilateral banks. And that's the Infrastructure Financing Facilitation Office. When it comes to corporate financing and other financing matters, it plays a role of liaison. Last month, under the leadership of the Chief Executive, we have a delegation comprising representatives from the business commercial sector and the financial sector. Uh, we also took part in a forum. And some state enterprise representatives were also invited to the forum to receive a briefing from us. Um, well, apart from the mainland, we have over a hundred countries along the Belt and Road. So what are you going to do about them? Or are you just leveraging on the mainland's initiative? Because investment won't just come from the mainland. Well, for the State Don't Asset Supervision Administration Commission of the State Council, they have more projects on their hands and they are of uh, they are more capable of attracting investments in different areas. So I we do encourage them to use Hong Kong as a platform for financing activities. I see time is running out. Will please go on. Regarding annuity plan, the Hong Kong Mortgage Corporation has launched an annuity plan. It is a one-off investment. You pay a down payment for a certain period of time and then annuity payment will be made out. Whereas for deferred annuity, we're now in the process of consulting the sector. But in short, there will be a locked-in investment period when you are required to pay contributions. And then another period for paying annuity, say, ten years. And the participants will be encouraged to devise a retirement plan. And we're looking into how we should set the uh, annuity products parameters and the tax concessions. So it's different from the annuity plan of the Hong Kong Mortgage Corp. The deferred annuity plan is to cater the needs of different people and to encourage them to prepare and to save up for retirement. We're supposed to adjourn this meeting at three ten. So let me say that Mister Holden Chow, Doctor Law Y Kwok, Mister James Toh and Doctor Elizabeth Quat, these members will be able to ask questions before we adjourn the meeting. For other members, you should pursue the question on other occasions. Mister Holden Chow. A number of questions on FSTB FS zero six two. It is said that weighted voting rights structure will be introduced in Hong Kong and we welcome that. But according to your written reply, you mentioned that there will be um, investor education center to educate investors. Now, in terms of your expenditure, I wonder whether you would set up a fund specialized in supporting litigation? For example, after introducing the weighted voting right structure, some minority shareholders might want to take the matter to court. And I wonder whether at this stage, you would consider setting up a specialized fund for helping these small investors? The next question relates to zero six eight, a question put by Mister Wong Ting Kwong. And according to the written reply, it is said that two hundred million dollars will be provided for Cyberport to um, to support the startups, including fintech startups and promote development of digital technology ecosystem. There will also be an easy landing program to attract multinational companies to set up offices in Hong Kong. And I want to know details of your plan. Does it mean that rental concessions will be offered for them to rent their offices at a cheaper rate? Or will there also be some form of support for recruiting manpower? Secretary. Regarding a litigation fund for weighted voting rights structure, well, we have given it a thought because for class action. Well, in terms of our protection regime in Hong Kong, we don't see an urgency in introducing class action from the experience of US and UK. Basically, for example, in UK, class action doesn't really apply in disputes or litigations arising from weighted weighted voting rights. So it is not a really necessary element of the structure. And many of these cases relate to disclosure rather than the weighted voting right itself. As for class action, we have yet to have class action in Hong Kong, so we do not plan to set up a litigation fund. But we have heard views from different members. We will keep in view the developments in this regard. As for the second question, about two hundred million dollars allocated to Cyberport. This is a special allocation to the Cyberport. And this is actually under the purview of the Innovation Technology Bureau. After allocating two hundred million dollars to Cyberport, it can then enhance the support for startups as well as innovate innovative companies. But I think that details will have to be provided by the IT Bureau.
We don't have the ITB here. Would you like to ask supplementary questions? Well, maybe I will ask the ITB for details. Mister Law Y Kwok. Is about zero seven one. It's a question asked by Mister Abraham Scheck. He asked about workers of different trade, average pay and demand. You have answered about different wage levels of different trades. However, when it comes to demand and how many people are engaged in these in these trades, the administration has not given us any information. If you don't have the information, how do you know about our labor situation? The other question is about applications for importation of labor and a number of approved cases. In twenty seventeen, there is a very small number of applications. Just about a dozen of them. Compared to previous years, there is a big difference. I understand that there will be a time lag between application and approval. But how come that there is such a small number in twenty seventeen? Can my question be answered? Let's hear from the Census and Statistics Department Commissioner. Well, the construction sector is very different. There are a lot of subcontractors, sub-subcontractors of many different levels. So it's very difficult for for us to obtain statistics without duplications. Taking into account the special characteristics of this sector, well, we realize that it is practically very difficult to obtain accurate statistics. I will have to go back to find information why there is such a small number in twenty seventeen. Perhaps the Census and Statistics Department is only responsible for compiling statistics. I do think that Policy Bureau will have to understand the latest situation of labor supply and demand. If they can't give me an answer now, I will follow up on a different occasion. I believe that there are some, there will always be some questions about um, imported import of labor, especially when it comes to the construction sector. There will be a difference amongst different trade. For some, there may be surplus. For others, there may be serious um, short manpower shortage, say, for example, bar bender and fixer. If you don't even know the general situation of demand-supply, then how are you supposed to answer questions when asked about importation of labor? How come that you have not shown us the questions on the projector? It will be better. Mister James Toh. I would like to follow up on fifty three. It's question number six four five is in relation to collective investment schemes. I asked about the number of complaints and how many of them are collective investment schemes and how many of them are not. That means complaint to the Securities and Futures Commission. I see that they said they have received seventy nine suspected collective investment schemes without approval, forty seven of them related to real estate. I am particularly concerned about those related to property and overseas ones. That is collective investment schemes that are not approved. It seems that the forty seven cases are not confirmed whether they are collective investment schemes or not. That means they haven't even gone past the first um stage yet. Is it that bad? That is the internal work of the SFC? I don't have detailed information requested by the member. If need be, I can follow up with the SFC. There are forty seven cases because the question was asked whether how many of these are related to real estate projects? And we said that there, well, we don't have a breakdown. Perhaps it's my question that has misled you. I want to I wanted to ask about number of cases. How many of them are involved with collective investment schemes? How many of them do not? Well, if it is not collective investment schemes, then the SFC will not take action. Because the SFC will only take action against not approved collective investment schemes. The impression I get is that a complaint has been lodged a long time ago, but nothing is heard so far. Is it whether is it actually a collective investment schemes? You have to wait for years to get an answer. Over the past few years, when it comes to off-planned sale of flats in the UK, there are hundreds and up to a thousand of such cases. Complainers think that they are illegal collective investment schemes. Investigation has been taking place for a number of years. They don't, they haven't even found out whether it is a collective investment schemes, let alone prosecution. Do you not have enough resources or are there other reasons? Actually, some complaints were made in twenty fifteen sixteen and nothing is heard since. I know that this is not the core duty of the SFC, but is their responsibility. So you have to find out what reason why there is such a long delay. We'll follow up and give you an answer later. Mister Elizabeth Quat. The Hong Kong Exchange previously conducted a consultation to for the implementation of a new regime to support emerging and innovative industries. I come from the innovation and technology sector, so I support that. When it comes to pre-revenue companies, it's about biotech companies. I'd like to say that apart from biotech companies, well, the administration, especially the CEO, said that they have attached importance on AI, robotics and fintech. How come in the consultation and in the proposed regime, it only covers biotech biotechnology companies? Will you study to see whether it will be further expanded? Will there be resources to encourage overseas and mainland technology companies to come to Hong Kong? And about ICO? Well, so far, it's been stopped on the mainland. Some people say that they come to Hong Kong um, to do the same. And there is no investor protection in Hong Kong. Will you do something about it? In relation to other companies than biotech, say robotics, fintech and AI companies, whether they will be included in the pre-revenue scheme? We have explained that our primary concern is that for biotech companies, that is, pre-revenue biotech companies. In major economies, there are different requirements at different phases. So when we can there are requirements. It is easier for investors to understand. Say, for example, if they satisfy the requirements under phase one, that means the company has met certain standards. We focus on biotech companies because most of these pre-revenue companies in the US are biotech companies. That's where we start. Of course, we will have to take into account a suitable standards. Say, for example, for company for AI companies. Say for example, for company, for AI companies, standards of different stages like the FDA of the US. We have to have standards for investors to understand. In relation to ICO, we closely monitor the situation. We have seen um more of them coming to Hong Kong. Under the Securities and Futures Commission, uh we deal with them uh like collective investment schemes. We will closely monitor the situation to see what more we can do. For I ask all, well, there is no um conclusion when it comes to cryptocurrencies. What are the does and don'ts and how investors can be protected? That's the end of this session. Thank you. Next session will start at uh three twenty-five.